Okay, good morning. I'll call this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to order and ask Clerk, please call the roll, establish a quorum, and read the Metro Cable statement and meeting procedures.
Okay. Good morning. Supervisors Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, September 10th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to Clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak, and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. To make a comment by phone, please dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda item. Clerk staff will transfer each caller into the meeting, and you may be on hold for an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see Clerk staff for assistance or contact the Clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Okay, thank you. Flo, please stand, and Supervisor Hume, would you lead us in the pleasurable legion?
Please address the flag. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on right to off-agenda public comments. This is a time for people to comment on something not budget-related. So Madam Clerk, do we have anyone in the queue for off-agenda public comment?
We do not at this time.
Okay. So then we'll move right on to item number two.
Chairperson, may I clarify on the record? Would you like me to leave off-agenda open or go ahead and close the queue?
Go ahead and close the queue.
Okay, thank you. All right. For item number two, you're acting as the in-home Supportive Services Public Authority. This is to approve the Sacramento County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority fiscal year 2023-24 revised recommended budget.
Morning, John.
Good morning. My name is John Kozitzza. I'm the Executive Director for the Sacramento County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority. So I'm here this morning to present for your approval of the revised budget for the 2023-24 fiscal year for the public authority. The amount, total amount for this budget is $3,714,753. What you are seeing on this chart is the basis for the adjustment from our June budget. It includes some confirmed funding from the state of California for that provider program, career pathways training, which is on a reimbursement basis as well, and two full-time senior office assistants, which we will be supporting the enrollment orientation enrollment program due to the expansion of this program, and then funding from DCFAS additionally for With that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Okay, thank you, John. I don't see any supervisors queued up to speak. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Okay. Motion in a second. Please vote. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, now you're acting as the Board of Supervisors. This is the public hearing on and consideration of possible revisions to the fiscal year 2023-24 approved recommended budget and capital improvement plan.
Okay, turn it over to our CEO.
Good morning, Chair Desmond and Board members. I am, excuse me, really happy to be here to present the final budget for this fiscal year. Is there PowerPoint coming up? I'll start with thanking Amanda Thomas, our CFO, and her team for always doing just a remarkable job of putting this all together with all of the detail, and they really are just really amazing, so I want to thank Amanda and her team. I also want to thank David Villanueva and the Deputy County Executives because they too make this process much easier for me than it might otherwise be for really digging into the details. And then finally, department heads. The department heads and their fiscal staff work very hard and tirelessly to get this before you today, so I just want to thank everybody before we start. So as you know, we did a recommended budget in June, and we decided then that we would do additional growth now in September should resources be available. So the budget that will be before you today that Ms. Thomas will be presenting really continues to align with the priorities that you have set forth and identified through the community engagement plan. So we are recommending funding all of the growth that you prioritized in June because we have additional resources. Now, you won't be surprised that I am recommending additional contributions to our reserves. That's been my mantra for some time. And also, we are proposing a new reserve policy. So we are very, very close to meeting the target in the reserve policy that we now have in place. Ms. Thomas will be talking a lot more about this, but as you know, that target is nowhere near sufficient in the reserves that we need in light of a downturn, so we'll be recommending a new policy for you to consider today. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Thomas.
Thank you, Anne. Good morning, Amanda.
Good morning, Chair Desmond, members of the Board. I'm Amanda Thomas, the county's chief fiscal officer. And as Anne mentioned, I will be presenting the fiscal year 23-24 revised recommended budget. So as you know, and as Anne just mentioned, the recommended budget for this fiscal year was approved in June, and the purpose of the revised recommended budget is really to reflect changes based on new information available since that budget was prepared. And that includes things like the rebudgeting of grants and projects that were not completed last fiscal year, new state, federal, other dedicated funding and associated expenditures, updates of discretionary revenues based on revised assumptions, actual ending fund balances, including for the general fund. And then based on all of this new information, we make recommendations for additional growth and reserve changes that are funded with the change in resources. And I'll just note here that because the purpose of the revised recommended budget is really to reflect these changes to the budget that was approved in June, most of this presentation really does focus on those changes to the approved budget. So starting off first to look at the all-funds budget. Appropriations across all funds total $8.8 billion in the revised recommended budget, which is a $355 million increase compared to the approved budget. So this includes $65 million increase in the general fund, which I'll address on a later slide, and then a combined $291 million increase in other funds. And of that $291 million in other funds, $259 million represents what we call base budget changes, and that includes rebudgeting of capital projects, so projects that were not completed last fiscal year being rebudgeted to this fiscal year. And I'll just mention that those are also reflected as recommended changes to the capital improvement plan, and that's shown as attachment to the board letter. And then $32 million of that change in other funds represents appropriations associated with recommended growth, which I'll discuss on a later slide. So of that $8.8 billion in total appropriations, about $2.2 billion represents transfers, or what we also call reimbursements, between and within county funds, meaning that the net budgeted expenditures excluding the transfer activity is about $6.6 billion. So looking at what makes up that $8.8 billion in total appropriations, again, you can see that about a quarter of it, or $2.2 billion, is that transfer activity that I just mentioned, so that money that's moving between and within county funds. For that remaining $6.6 billion of appropriations, net of transfers, $3 billion or a little less than half of that remaining amount is for non-general fund budgets. And so these are expenditures that are largely funded by rate, fee, and other special revenues that are dedicated to a specific purpose. So an example of this would be utilities fees paid by customers. For the remaining amount, which is all within the general fund, $1.5 billion of that is funded with nondiscretionary departmental revenues, which are also dedicated to a specific purpose. So this could be for customer fees for general fund departments, for example, community development or clerk recorder's office, but it also includes a large amount of state and federal funding, especially for the county's social services departments. Also in the general fund, reimbursements from the semi-discretionary restricted funds fund about $1 billion of expenditures in the general fund. So these semi-discretionary reimbursements are from 1991 and 2011 realignment, as well as Proposition 172 public safety sales tax revenue, and those are received from the state and then fund programs in the county's social services and public safety departments. And then finally, discretionary resources in the general fund, including both discretionary revenues, like property taxes and sales taxes, as well as fund balance fund about $1 billion of expenditures. And we generally refer to the appropriations funded with discretionary resources as net county cost.
Thank you, Amanda. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to be clear, Amanda, does this chart include, under one of these pie slice titles here, enterprise funds or enterprise accounts?
Yes, and that would be in the red, non-general fund.
Okay, yes.
Exactly. Okay, so then just looking at that $6.6 billion in budgeted expenditures excluding the transfers, this chart shows how those expenditures are distributed by functional area in the county's budget. So again, across all funds, but netting out that transfer activity. So you can see that the largest share, at 35%, is for expenditures in the county's social services departments, so that includes the departments that are listed here. The second largest share, at 28%, is for community services, including these departments. Public Safety and Justice represents the third largest share at 18%, and that includes departments in the county's Public Safety and Justice Agency, as well as the sheriff and district attorney budgets. And then expenditures for administrative services and general government represent smaller shares at 12% and 7% respectively. So overall, these percentages are pretty similar to what was included in the approved budget, with community services representing a slightly larger share, really due to the rebudgeting of those capital expenditures that we see in the revised recommended budget that were not included in the approved budget. So turning now to look just at the general fund and focusing on a comparison to the June approved budget. You know, as Anne mentioned, consistent with that approval, the revised recommended general fund budget prioritizes the growth that was identified in June and also prioritizes increasing reserves. And as I'll discuss later, there's additional funded growth and priority needs that are also recommended for funding. And we are able to fund this additional growth and also provide for increased reserves because we have an increase in discretionary resources available. That's primarily resulting from the fund balance carryforward in the general fund, which, as you know, is unspent funding from the prior fiscal year and is higher than we had estimated for the approved budget. Because most of the increase in fund balance is used to fund expenditures, the budget is balanced with one-time resources to a greater extent than in the approved budget, and I'll show what that looks like on a chart a few slides from now. So with the remaining fund balance, we are recommending reserve contributions in compliance with the current reserve policy, and I'll be talking more about reserves later in the presentation as well. So this slide is illustrating the availability and the use of general fund discretionary resources, and it shows changes relative to the approved budget. So on the left, we're showing discretionary resources available, which include both one-time sources and ongoing revenues. And you can see at the top there that the actual beginning general fund balance is $49 million higher than was estimated for the approved budget, and that is resulting in additional one-time resources available. And then one of the reasons for the higher-than-estimated fund balance is that expenditures for the new property tax system last fiscal year were lower than budgeted due to project timing. So as a result of that, $12 million that was not spent last year for the property tax system needs to be retained in that property tax system reserve, which is reducing the amount of reserve release that will fund fiscal year 23-24 expenditures by 12 million. So that's that $12 million reduction you see in the middle of the box. Discretionary revenues and reimbursements, which are largely ongoing resources, are estimated to be $6 million higher than in the approved budget, and this primarily as a result of increased interest earnings in the general fund, which results both from sustained higher interest rates from higher, and from higher balances as the general fund reserves have been built up in recent years. So these higher interest earnings are partially offset by lower estimates of sales tax revenue as we continue to see both slowing inflation and lower projected sales activity in certain categories. So together, the sum of these discretionary resources on the left must equal the use of discretionary resources on the right, which includes both net county cost or expenditures funded with discretionary resources and reserve contributions. And while I'll talk in more detail about these uses of discretionary resources later in the presentation, you can see here that net county cost in the revised recommended budget is $36 million higher than in the approved budget, and we're also recommending additional reserve increases of $7 million for a total additional use of discretionary resources of $43 million, which is equal to the total additional discretionary resources available. The other thing I will point out here, though, is that you can see that while our net county cost increased by $36 million, discretionary revenue only increased by $6 million, meaning that we're relying on that one-time fund balance to fund expenditures, again, to a greater extent than in the approved budget. So this chart shows what that looks like with the actual general fund beginning fund balance for fiscal year 23-24, both what was assumed in June for the approved budget and now the actual fund balance that's included in the revised recommended budget. And then it also shows that fund balance for prior-year budgets, with the top of each bar in the chart representing the total beginning available fund balance that year. And looking at the totals, you can see that historically, the amount has been, you know, somewhere around $50 million, and the very high fund balance we've seen in recent years is really due in large part to impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. And as these impacts subside, we would not expect the same level of fund balance carryforward in future years, which is why it's important to not rely on this funding source for ongoing expenditures. And you can see that we're already seeing a reduction this year compared to the last two fiscal years. And then if you look at the blue portion of each of these bars, that's showing the amount of fund balance that's budgeted to fund current-year expenditures, while the orange portion is representing the amount of fund balance set aside in reserves each year. And you can see that with this revised recommended budget, we are funding more expenditures, as I mentioned, with fund balance than was in the case in June or in last year's budget. So approximately a third of these expenditures are one-time, meaning that the remaining two-thirds represent ongoing expenditures that are funded with one-time resources, which does result in structural imbalance in the budget, and this means that additional ongoing resources would be needed to avoid reductions in future years. Okay, so in addition to discretionary resources, another source of funding in the general fund, as I mentioned earlier, is what we call semi-discretionary resources. And that includes 1991 and 2011 realignment funding and Proposition 172 public safety sales tax revenue. So this is revenue received in restricted funds and then transferred to the general fund to fund eligible expenditures in social services and public safety departments. Fund balance available in the semi-discretionary funds is $50 million higher than estimated for the June budget, but most of that is related to higher-than-anticipated Cowworks revenue received last fiscal year, which is anticipated to be recouped by the state this fiscal year. So the non-Cowworks fund balance of about $13 million is being added to semi-discretionary reserves to be available for future-year spending. And then semi-discretionary reimbursements, which are our funding source in the general fund, are increasing by about $2 million in total, including $1 million for recommended growth that I will discuss later. So looking at appropriations in the general fund, of the overall $65 million increase that I mentioned earlier compared to the approved budget, $23 million results from base budget changes for things like rebudgeting of projects, grants, and other obligations that were not fully expended last year, as well as additional state federally funded programs and then other costs that were approved after development of the June budget. And we're also recommending a $2 million increase to the general fund contingency. That would bring the total contingency budgeted to $14 million, which would be available to address unbudgeted costs for potential unanticipated or uncertain needs that would occur during the fiscal year. And then in addition to these base budget changes, the general fund budget also includes $41 million in total in additional appropriations compared to the approved budget for recommended additional new or enhanced programs, what we call growth. $31 million of that is funded with net county cost, and most of the recommended growth and nearly all of the net county cost growth was part of the June budget approval to be prioritized for funding in the revised recommended budget, again, if sufficient additional resources were available.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. The total $14 million, Amanda, that you mentioned in the contingency fund, if we encountered unexpected cost between today and next June when we obviously revisit the recommended budget, it's that account, that amount, that would be subject to a four-fifth vote of the Board to appropriate? Is that?
Correct, right. So it would be an appropriation adjustment that would come to the Board and require a four-fifth vote to release the contingency.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so while the revised recommended budget focuses on changes compared to the approved budget, it's also important not to lose sight of all the new or enhanced programs that are already included in the approved budget, which of course are still included in the revised recommended budget. So overall, the approved budget funded over $200 million in all-funds growth, with $146 million of that in the general fund. And then on top of that, as part of the June budget approval, again, the Board also prioritized an additional $34 million in general fund growth for inclusion in the revised recommended budget. And then, as I mentioned, the revised recommended budget includes funding for all of this prioritized growth, plus additional recommended growth of $7 million, which, as I'll describe in more detail on a later slide, is mostly funded with dedicated funding and not discretionary resources. And then the revised recommended budget also includes $32 million of additional non-general fund appropriations that are all linked to that general fund growth. So either as the expenditure side of the transfer of funding from the general fund, so for example, in the roads fund, or as a reimbursement to fund growth in the general So this slide lists some of the highlights of the most significant general fund growth that was already included in the approved budget, so part of that budget that was approved in June. And all of this was presented in detail during those June budget hearings, so I won't go into detail here, but just wanted to highlight and remind everyone that there was $35 million with $7 million of that net county cost growth to address the county's obligations under the May's Consent Decree by supporting programs in multiple county departments that are intended to reduce the jail population. In addition to that, $10 million of additional net county cost growth in the sheriff and correctional health budgets was included to meet the requirements of the May's Consent Decree remedial plan, including for additional staffing and services. And then $12 million total, with $4 million of that net county cost was added for new or enhanced programs addressing homelessness, again, across many county departments. And then this also includes the funding for regional parks, parkway encampment response that was added by the Board during the June hearings. In the health services budget, more than $84 million of funded growth was added in the approved budget. This included amounts related to the May's Consent Decree in addressing homelessness. And then in child, family, and adult services, $17 million of growth, with $3 million of that net county cost was added to support several program and service enhancements. This table is showing the growth that was prioritized in June for inclusion in the revised recommended budget, all of which is recommended to be funded. I won't go over each item in detail, but I did want to note the highlighted numbers, which reflect changes to some of the recommended funding sources compared to what was presented in June. So the first yellow highlighted figure represents the amount transferred from the general fund to the roads and parks construction funds to fund projects that are listed on the second half of the table. And one of those projects, also highlighted in yellow here, is for about $2.9 million for repaving at Ansel Hoffman. In June, we showed this as being fully funded with a transfer from the general fund, and we're actually now recommending that the portion of the project that's related to the golf course parking lot, which is about $600,000, also highlighted in yellow right below that, that that be funded from the golf fund. So that reduces the amount of funding coming from the general fund for that project. And then the other change is for Probation's Valley Oak Youth Academy program. This is associated with the juvenile justice realignment. So you can see that highlighted in green for about $2.75 million. Instead of funding that with net county cost, as shown in June, we're recommending it to be funded with a combination of fund balance available due to the juvenile justice realignment block grant funding that was not spent last fiscal year, and then also semi-discretionary funding. So you can see those two highlighted in green toward the bottom of the table. And so while this funding is available for this current fiscal year, this fund balance, if additional state funding isn't received in future years, then this cost would need to be funded with net county cost in future years. And then you can see on this table that the total for general fund prioritized growth included in the revised recommended budget, so again, the growth that was prioritized in June, that total is about $34 million in appropriations, with a combined net county cost of about $31 million. Okay, and then, as I mentioned earlier, in addition to the growth that was prioritized in June, we're recommending new growth, most of which is funded with dedicated resources. The total for new general fund growth is $7 million, with only about $700,000 of that funded with net county cost. So the most significant new items are listed here and include $5.5 million to expand the Landlord Engagement and Assistance Program, or LEAP, which provides housing services to individuals transitioning from homelessness. This program is currently funded with ARPA revenue, with additional one-time expenditures for this expansion here, this $5.5 million funded with Managed Care Plan revenue. In addition to that, there's $1.4 million in additional revenue for the Toxicology Crime Laboratories Grant from the CHP. That supports the cost of additional supplies and equipment, and then existing personnel costs in the district attorney's budget. And then $500,000 of And then $500,000 of net county cost is recommended for the climate action plan, environmental impact report, and $200,000 of combined net county cost for unanticipated costs associated with county department office moves. So now, looking at recommendations for general fund reserves, overall, there's a $19 million net reserve increase compared to the approved budget. This includes an additional $5 million for general reserves to comply with the existing general reserves policy that calls for 10% of available fund balance to be contributed to general reserves each year. So this is in addition to the $11 million general reserves contribution in the approved budget, and would bring the general reserves balance to $85 million, which is about 9.7% of discretionary revenue, and very close to the 10% target in the current reserve policy. $2 million in combined contributions are required for reserves for the teeter plan and impressed cash reserves. And then in addition to the reserve contributions, as I mentioned earlier, there's also a $12 million reduction to the release from the property tax system reserve, which brings the overall net reserve increase compared to the approved budget to $19 million. Overall, $18 million of the $159 million fund balance is set aside in reserves. So this includes the $11 million reserve contribution from the approved budget, plus the $7 million of additional reserve contributions recommended in the revised recommended budget. And with these recommended contributions, total discretionary reserves would stand at $298 million. And if we exclude certain dedicated reserves, so such as the property tax system reserve and the liability reserve, total discretionary reserves not dedicated to a specific purpose would be about $206 million. So there's a couple of ways to put that number in context. The first is that it represents about 5.4% of total general fund revenues, while the best practice recommendation of the Government Finance Officers Association is for a minimum of two months, or about 17% of annual revenues. So while the current 5.4% is much higher than it would have been just a few years ago, it's still well below where we should be, you know, by that standard.
Amanda?
Yes.
Superintendent is coming.
Thank you. With regard to that 17% that you just mentioned, Amanda, that's two months, assuming no changes to FTE?
Right, so it would be two months based on the current budget. You could look at either expenditures or revenues, they tend to be about the same, but yes, it would be whatever the current budgeted amount is. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
So then, another way to sort of put that number in context, so that, you know, $206 million that I talked about that we have right now in non-dedicated discretionary reserves, is to look at what actually happened to the county's tax revenues during the last recession. I know you've all seen this chart before, but as you can see, you know, it took nearly 10 years for tax revenues to return to the pre-recession levels, and the cumulative revenue loss during that time period would have required reserves of about $600 million to maintain funding at the 2008 level. So if we experienced the same kinds of percentage losses with today's tax revenues, that number would, of course, be even larger. And this chart doesn't take into account all of the other funding sources, such as semi-discretionary, state funding, federal revenue sources, and other sources that would be subject to the same sorts of impacts during economic downturns. So if these revenues were factored in, if we looked more holistically at total revenues, of course, that number would be even larger still. So with all of this in mind, as we discussed in June, we are recommending a new general fund reserve policy that would be effective starting with the fiscal year '24, '25 budget process. And the reasons for the new policy are really both because we've nearly achieved the target of the current policy, and then because, you know, as we've seen, that target is not nearly high enough, considering the revenue risks to the county posed by a future economic downturn. So just as a reminder, the current policy was adopted in 2016 and applies to general reserves, which is a specific reserve in the general fund. Under the current policy, the target general reserves balance is 10% of only discretionary revenues in the general fund. So using estimated discretionary revenues for this fiscal year, that target equals $88 million. And then the current policy, the funding policy in the current policy, is an annual contribution of 10% of the current year's general fund available fund balance carry forward, get added to general reserves each year until the target is reached. So as I mentioned, the GFOA recommendation is for a minimum of two months, or about 17% of total operating revenue in the general fund, which is both a higher percentage and a larger revenue base, because it looks at all revenue sources in the general fund, not just discretionary revenue. So the general fund reserve policy that we are recommending that the board adopt, again, to be effective for the '24, '25 budget process, is included as Attachment 1 to the Board letter, and it sets a new target for non-dedicated discretionary reserves, which includes general reserves, but also includes the general fund cash flow reserve and the service stability reserve that was created last fiscal year. So a target for these combined reserves of 17% of total general fund revenues and reimbursements, which would be about $650 million, using estimated total revenues for this fiscal year. So again, this compares to about $206 million currently in those reserves, which represents about 5% compared to the 17% target.
Excuse me, Amanda. Superintendent?
Yes.
Thank you. So Amanda, with regard to this new proposed reserve policy, let's say we hit the 17% mark at some later time. How would we be expected to consider fund balance once that target is hit? Would we essentially be looking at more, just more resources to work with in subsequent fiscal years?
Sure. So, you know, the policy is really written, you know, with the goal in mind of getting there, knowing that it will take many years, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the process that we've laid out to do that. But say we are at some point in the future where we have hit that 17%. So we've achieved the minimum target in the policy. So under the policy, there wouldn't be sort of any requirement for us to think about prioritizing setting aside money in reserves versus funding growth, for example. But it does recognize, and I think it's always important for us to recognize, that we want to make sure we're aligning our ongoing spending with ongoing resources. So fund balance, as you know, is a one-time resource. So I think we wouldn't recommend that we, you know, we would start a new ongoing program with this one-time funding, but we might look at one-time expenditures to use that one-time resource on.
And then, in terms of the contingency that we would be presumably considering each June with recommended budget, each September with final, do we have a policy around that similar to this that identifies a target?
We don't have a policy that identifies a target. I mean, I think, you know, in thinking about contingency, I think it's important to, so there are some things that we're aware of, but we may not know, you know, what the impact would be. We may know that there's a potential impact. There's also other things that, you know, we just don't know about at the beginning of the year that may come up during the year. So we sort of, you know, I think, do an assessment based on what we might be aware of, that could change each year in terms of what makes sense to set aside, but there is not, there's not a policy that specifies that.
The association that you mentioned earlier that suggests 17% is kind of the industry standard, if you will, do they have any opinion about what a contingency should be each fiscal year?
So not within the fund balance policy that I'm referring to, that I'm aware of, I can't say for sure that they don't on the contingency. That's something I'm happy to look into and get back to you on.
I raise it just because I think, I think it's wise that we consider this reserve policy, but I also think, because that's what I consider the long-term outlook, right, for making sure that we have resources available should the economy turn. But I also think it's, might be wise to consider a policy for contingencies moving forward, because, you know, that's obviously, that's an account that we go to for emergent situations during the course of that fiscal year. And I can, I can just kind of think off the top of my head what some of the things, especially with regards to our condition of our roads, that we might be asked to be thinking about much more by our constituents over the next several months. So I'd like to propose that we do come back at some point in the not-too-distant future with maybe some options for how we might consider a contingency policy for our budgets.
Okay.
Thanks.
I think that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent.
So, so back to the reserve policy. I talked a little bit about, you know, the target and the fact that we know it will take, you know, many years, just as with the current policy. It took many years for us to get close to the target. We know it will take many years to get there. The other important thing that is, that's detailed in the policy itself, is what that funding policy would be to get us to being able to achieve that target through the recommendations that we make in the budget process. So under that recommended funding approach, you know, the first thing that we would prioritize, because we're really talking about discretionary resources in the general fund, and how are we going to use them to either fund expenditures or build reserves. So the first thing is that, you know, we're going to prioritize the base budget needs, so the current year expenditures that are needed to maintain current service levels. So that would be funded first, before we considered additional reserve contributions. And then we would also prioritize funding any new county obligations, things that we don't have a choice over but need to be funded. And also ensure that we're at least maintaining general reserves at 10% of discretionary revenue, so that we're not falling below the policy that has been in place. So once we've done those things, then in the recommended budget, we would be looking at a minimum of 25% of the discretionary resources remaining that would be added to discretionary reserves, with the larger share of that, 75% of remaining resources available to fund general fund growth. And then in the revised recommended budget, we would take a sort of a similar approach that we've taken in recent years, where we would use any net additional resources to fund growth that had been prioritized during the June budget approval process, and then any remaining discretionary resources would be deposited in reserves, again, till we get to that 17% target. So while this policy and funding approach would, as I've just described, guide our recommendations in the budget process in support of working toward the new reserve target, the board, of course, would always have the option to adjust those recommendations in the approved budget or the adopted budget. So in addition to the reserve policy, another recommendation we have looking forward to next year's budget relates to the community engagement plan. So just to set some context, and as a reminder, I wanted to first talk a little bit about the community engagement plan elements that we've implemented for the last two budget years. And those have included launching and updating a budget in brief budget summary, as well as an online budget explorer tool, both of which have easily accessible and understandable budget information just for the general public and are available on the county's website. Another element has been outreach to the county's advisory boards and commissions, which included extensive outreach by departments in the summer of 2021 to understand priorities for the county's budget, and then continued engagement during the budget processes each year to inform department budget requests. In October of 2021, and then again in December of '22, we held virtual public budget workshops to provide an overview of the county's budget and budget process, and an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions and provide input. And then using all of the input gathered through these outreach efforts, we worked with a professional public opinion polling firm to conduct a public opinion survey of a representative sample of residents countywide to understand the community's priorities for the county's budget, with that survey conducted in the fall of 2021. And then last year, we followed up on that survey by working with the same public opinion firm to conduct focus groups of county residents to gain further understanding of some of the issues that were identified as priorities in the survey results. So then, leading up to the budget process in each of the last two years, the board then adopted budget priorities for the use of general fund discretionary resources, reflecting the community priorities highlighted in the survey results and then reinforced in the focus group findings, and those priorities were used to develop and evaluate the budget requests that were then recommended to the board. So then, looking forward to the '24, '25 budget process, we are continuing to recommend a community engagement plan that builds upon the elements already implemented. So this includes, you know, continuing to publish, support, and develop easy-to-understand information explaining the county's budget and making this information available on the county's website. And then building on the 2021 budget priorities survey and the 2022 focus groups, we'll work with the same firm to conduct a follow-up survey of budget priorities for county residents this fall. Departments will, of course, continue to engage with their advisory boards and commissions to help inform their budget requests, and we will conduct one or more budget workshops open to the public in order to continue sharing information about the county's budget and provide an opportunity for the public to ask questions and provide input. And then based on all of this information, including results of the survey, which will be presented to the board, staff will recommend to the board any updates or refinements to the budget priorities in advance of the development of the fiscal year '24, '25 budget.
Thank you, Amanda. Superintendent?
Thank you. So if there's one telltale trait of the Anna Edwards administration, it's certainly the use of survey instruments for a number of things, which I think is wise. But I want to make sure I understand what these surveys, focus groups include. Are we always asking the opinions of all county residents, whether they live in the cities and unincorporated county, or just unincorporated county?
So all residents. So this is, yeah, it's a representative sample of, you know, the demographics of the county as a whole. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes the substance of my presentation. This slide lists the recommended actions. So in addition to approval of the revised recommended budget, the other actions include, for recommendations two and three, administrative actions related to the budget approval. Action four is approval of changes to the capital improvement program consistent with the budget changes that are included in the revised recommended budget. Action five is approval of the resolution adopting the new general fund reserve policy, and action six is approval of the community engagement plan that I just described. And I am happy to answer any additional questions.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda. Any, no other presentations from county staff? I don't see any superintendents with comments right now. Oh, Superintendent?
Thank you, and thank you, Amanda, for the presentation. It's a lot to digest, and I think it reflects all the hard work you put into thoughtfully presenting what our fiscal condition is, and now we have another new policy to consider as well. So I appreciate the time and energy you put into it. I do want to make mention, especially for the three colleagues that were not in the meeting that Chair Desmond and I were in yesterday, that we had a very productive meeting that we both asked for, and the subject of that meeting was to do some brainstorming around the subject of family finding. And some may ask what that means, but I've come to learn it is really a term that is used in the child welfare space to make sure that, as a matter of priority and policy, that when we are trying to thoughtfully place children, minors, through our CPS system, that we're looking to the family first. And it makes a lot of sense for a lot of reasons that we learned about yesterday. There are other counties in the state of California that exceed, in some regard, to a large extent, what we're doing right now in terms of prioritizing. I think everyone around the table, which also included Deputy County Exec Jevon Qatari and Michelle KAS, so people that I really respect in terms of their thoughtfulness around child welfare, subject matter, really kind of enlightened us that we have a lot of work to do when it comes to hitting the mark in terms of the percentage of children that are placed with family members. So I was delighted to learn yesterday that we found incredibly- So I was delighted to learn yesterday that we found, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we found some 1991 realignment funds that can be used to, to initiate some planning around how best to better hit that mark, that being, you know, the percentage of, of minors that are placed with family members. Right now, I think it's hovering around 22%. And we need to do much better than that. So again, I want to thank Chair Desmond. He was quick to help convene this meeting and I think it's, you know, produced some, some good recommendations initially in terms of what needs to happen step by step. But the first step is finding some resources to, to induce some planning, perhaps hiring a consultant around how we improve that aspect of our child protective services activities.
And I'll just, excuse me, Superintendent Hume, just chime in briefly. Thank you, Superintendent Serna, for initiating the discussion about this, too. And I, I also want to thank staff for the discussion yesterday and agree wholeheartedly with Superintendent Serna and, and staff's recommendation to start with evaluating what we have and developing a work plan and how we can improve our, connecting our foster youth with, with family members. And, you know, I think I'm probably not alone in, in believing that Sacramento County, you know, we should be leading the way in some of these areas and, and all of these areas, hopefully. I know there are some unique characteristics of Sacramento County that we may have some challenges other counties don't have. But I think part of this effort with a consultant using this realignment funding hopefully can help us identify what those are and, what those are and ways we can adjust for that to be more successful. So I appreciate you bringing, you bringing this forward. Thank you. Okay, Superintendent Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I wasn't necessarily anticipating a discussion about foster youth during budget discussions, but I will add that I saw a billboard on the way yesterday or today that was advertising for resource families. And I don't know why we changed the name from a foster household to a resource family, but it's just cold and heartless in my estimation. Resources are something you mine. Fosterings is something you do to lift people up. So I don't know if there was a reason behind that, but I mean, if we're looking at how do we be a little more humanistic in, in what is obviously a broken system, I would say that's an area where we can maybe focus as well.
Ms. Qatari can address that because it's, it's too different. The terms are used differently.
Is that right?
We still call foster parents foster parents.
Okay.
Yeah. So resource families is actually a term that the state Department of Social Services created, and it's just a broader category for different families that can basically care for children. And I think the, the important part of that is that it's not always parents that are taking care of it. It could be a grandparent. It could be a teacher. It could be a coach. And I think they wanted to just do a more expansive definition for resource families. But our CEO Edwards is right that there are two categories there, but we are recruiting for both categories at all times.
And this is why you bring things up. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Back to the matter at hand, I just want to thank you, Ms. Thomas, and you, Ms. Edwards, for such a professional walkthrough for my first budget briefing and, and process, both in June and then also, you know, for this meeting. As hard as I tried to find weak spots and pick apart little tables and, and try and, I wasn't necessarily looking for a gotcha moment, but you know, with $8.8 billion, you, you got to think there's a couple nickels left in the couch cushions. And every time, the professionalism, the, the knowledge base, the understanding, and the way to just kind of be able to figure it out and, and take maybe how my brain works and figure it out on how that translates into the document that I was perusing, I just really appreciate that. And I, I didn't want to get through today without saying that. I mean, it's, it's strong work that you've done and strong work that you've produced. And, and I appreciate the handholding that had to happen for the new, new guy. But I do promise that between now and next year, I will have time to dive deeper into these documents and understand.
We'd expect nothing less from the District Five supervisor.
Yeah. I think, I think he's channeling someone.
Yeah. And so, yeah, I look forward to that process. And then I, I just want to appreciate certainly all of the, my colleagues on the, on the dais here and the, the requests that we put forward in June, and now that those are able to be realized, I think it's a great, a great testament to some of the high priorities. Speaking of priorities, the one thing relative to the $12 million increase in newer enhanced homelessness programs, I do expect that we will be able to track those growth programs so that we'll know whether that money is being put to good use. And then that leads me into my next point, which is relative to the revert, reserve policy. And the first thing that I'd like to say is I really commend this board prior to my arrival, as well as staff, for really making a commitment to build up those reserves. It's not something that's fun. It's not something that's easy to watch that money just sit there and, and not be put to use because the needs will always outweigh the means. But it's important. And, and, and I know that in Elk Grove, we had a, a policy of 20% that I think we came through both the recession and the pandemic with somewhere in the neighborhood of 23% of general fund revenues still available. And so, you know, when you put away a rainy day fund and you make it through a squall and you still have rainy day funds available, it feels pretty good. So I commend the effort that has been made, and I support the effort for this new policy. But I do have a question. As far as when was the last time anything resembling a zero-based budget process took place or, or something that worked from bottom up to, to justify expenditures rather than just always additive?
I don't recall that we've done that ever.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not aware of a, a true zero-based budget process happening. I will tell you that I think it's important every year, and I think part of, you know, part of the, the message that we give to departments and that our office works with departments on, to, to, to truly figure out what is, what is required. So let's not just start with the number that we had last year and add to that because we know by seeing the fund balance that we've generated the last couple of years that we're not, we're not always spending that, that number that's budgeted. And sometimes that's because things have changed. Maybe we've gotten more efficient and we need to start reflecting that in the budget, or maybe we're doing something differently. And I, and so I think that, that spirit of, you know, let's look at what we really need is part of our budget process. I wouldn't say that it is a, a true zero base, but I, but I think that, that's sort of the spirit and the intent of, like, let's look at what does it actually take? So we use the term base budget. That's not what was the dollar amount last year. It's what do we need to spend this year to maintain the same service levels that we had last year? So I was thinking about it in that way. I'm not sure if that's what you're getting at, but I think that's, that's really aligned with what the approach is.
It is. And I, and I definitely, I didn't mean to cut you off there. Apologize. It is, and I definitely appreciate the spirit of kind of starting from scratch, if you will, at least as far as, you know, what is the necessary baseline. I would, I would expect, though, that maybe as we look to implement a new policy, which is based off of a larger number, both in the percentage and in what it is a percentage of, but it's also based off of revenue. And so, you know, with every financial document, there are two sides to the equation, whether it's assets and liabilities or, or income and expense. And so if you're only ever concerned with one side of the equation, maybe you're, you're missing out on something. And so 17% of a smaller number, well, actually, if it's based on revenue, it wouldn't be a smaller number, but nonetheless, you, you see where I'm going here. So I would just like, as we look at growing the amount that we put away, we find a way to, to sort of pick, pick, spread that across a little bit so that we're still doing everything that's essential, but maybe we're able to, to find, realize some savings within what we're already doing in order to build that number up more quickly. And then the, the last thing I'll say is the, the point brought up by my colleague, Supervisor Serna regarding a contingency policy, I think that's great, and I think there's a little bit of those reserve funds that are already identified within, outside of just general reserves. And so to the extent that we need to bolster those is a good thing. But all in all, I just wanted to express my sincere thanks for what I think is, is a pretty solid work product. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Hume. Did you have any other comment?
I just wanted to, to follow up on the discussion of the family findings. So Supervisor Serna mentioned social services realignment. So I think, I think what we, what we've identified, if you remember earlier in my presentation, I talked about the fact that we were using some of the fund balance from the semi-discretionary funds, which would include '91 realignment, and recommending putting that in reserve. So I think we would be talking about reducing the amount of that fund balance that would go to reserved and using that one-time funding for some one-time expenditures. So that would be a change to the budget that's recommended.
And we didn't actually speak about the dollar figure, but we're thinking of $300,000.
I thought I, I thought I had mentioned it, but.
Okay. I may have missed it. My apologies.
Okay. Great. Again, just because, Amanda, you brought it up, I want to extend my thanks to everyone that had a part in helping us think through what I think is a critically important objective that I think we all agree we need to focus on, and it's timely. And hopefully this time next year, we, we have somewhat of a, a plan moving forward. And in fact, I would just have us think, too, that if we do come up with a plan, we get a better handle on what needs to take place sooner than between now and next June. Because we do have, was it 14 million in contingency?
Yes.
Is that, is that a source that we might tap if we needed to take some other next steps that, you know, did come with some expense?
It would either be contingency or.
Or more, more social service.
Or potentially social service realignment. It just depends on what, what the need is and what the most appropriate funding source is.
I just want to, I bring that up just because I want to make clear that this is the beginning, not the end of this initiative, so.
Right. That it, that it will take an additional resource, there will be an additional resource need, obviously, to carry out what is recommended by the consultants. Okay. Thank you, Amanda. Let's move to public comment.
Okay. So we have, we have one public comment so far that signed up in person, and Ms. Connie Arnold.
Does she want to?
Oh, I'm going to bring you a mic. Sorry.
Thank you, Flo. And I would ask the other, some other folks in chambers, okay. So Jeff, you have a public comment for him.
Yeah, everybody got to get a silver house.
Charles.
Thank you, Chairman Desmond. Nice to see you again and members of the committee. And Pat Hume, who is from my district, District Five. I'm a person who lives in Elk Grove. I've been a resident of Sacramento County since May of 2000. And I'm here today to say that there are a number of issues. I, I missed the last agenda item, so I'm speaking now, but, and hopefully you'll let me continue, but I see that there's a problem, there's no transparency in statistics, no accountability for services, and no oversight of operations and delivery of services to the public when it comes to specific certain social services programs and also entities that are contracted for the county, which is IHSS public authority. Those of us trying to live independently in the community are struggling with the existing wages paid to IHSS providers, which is also the same rate for those of us that are on a home and community-based alternative services waiver who get additional hours above IHSS to try to live independently in the community. And this is negatively impacting individuals who are quadriplegics, functional quadriplegics, and people with complex chronic conditions. And we know that at this point, after my being an expert on IHSS for over 40 years, reading regulation, reading regulations and testifying, that this is a real problem for those of us that are aging to be able to continue to live independently and not be forced out of our homes and into institutions. Because we cannot afford the kind of staffing that we need that are competent, reliable, actually show up to work, don't call in sick at the last minute, and, and just don't show up. And when you need help daily with personal care needs, including bathrooming issues, that is an all-day-long issue, this is a problem for those of us. I am not getting adequate or good referrals from the IHSS public authority system. I know they had their presentation, which I tried to get here, but parking was a little difficult, and I had a little bit of a walk to get down here. I know that negotiations are going on around wages. I know that Congressman John Garamendi and a number of congresspeople wrote to the governor in October of 2022, saying wages for providers needed to be raised to $20 an hour. And I also know that right now we need to see more transparency, and we have problems with the public authority, the backup services they claim to have doesn't really exist. And giving people a list and telling you to call individuals who have the right to turn down services and being left for 18 hours without care last October was a problem. And a number of other problems, including not being able to get services when I got COVID just before Christmas last year. I thought I was going to go to the hospital just because their list was useless from the public authority. There's no guarantee of getting services, and it's not available 24/7. And we have no accountability, transparency, and no oversight of these programs. And I'm not alone in saying that because the state auditor, in their February 25th of 2021 report, said 40,000 people on the IHSS program were going without care every month, every month. And my parents are in their 80s, and I'm fearful for my life as a person with a disability to be forced out of my home. I can't even sleep in my home because I can't find reliable caregivers to come to get me up and help me and assist me all day, all day long. And I'm sorry that I missed the presentation earlier for the public authority, but I would like to say that I think the whole IHSS system needs to be revamped, reformed, retired, and redone because it is not a serving individuals with severe impairments who want to stay living independently in the community. And I also want to say one last thing, because I know I need to wrap this up, is that there are, I've tried to help homeless people before. I have a heart. And I've called 211 and 311 and found that service to be an absolute joke. How can a homeless person with a scooter, with their battery that had been stolen, with no wallet, no Medi-Cal, get to a Medi-Cal office? They, they're referring you, well, that person needs to go here. That person needs to go there. These people can't do that. They need mobile homeless services. That would not be such a hard, difficult thing, to set up a van with a staff person and negotiate with county, with the county individuals, with the state, on how to help people get their lost licenses?
Thank you, Connie.
How to expedite their paratransit eligibility when they need a doctor and a mailbox to get services, when they can't get a Medi-Cal phone because they can't get to the Medi-Cal department?
Connie, can you wrap up?
Yeah.
Can you wrap up, please?
So anyway, I do hope that you will be concerned about these issues because we are all falling through the cracks.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Connie. And I gave you some extra time because you weren't here for the prior item, so thank you. And we are, we are going to be back at the negotiating table, I believe, next week. The county will be. But appreciate your comments. And with respect to the other items you mentioned, there will be some board meetings, I think, coming up this fall to discuss that very thing, 211 and connecting folks to services. Is that correct?
Yes. And if I could just add as well that we do have fairly significant mobile outreach to homeless encampments. Siobhan can probably speak more to the mobile health services, but we have outreach workers in the field that do help homeless individuals, you know, get their IDs, get connected to county services, including things like Medi-Cal.
Great. Well, we don't need to go into this, but I, maybe Connie, you can touch base with either Supervisor Hume's office, or we can get, put you in touch with county staff to get some more information. Superintendent Serna.
Thank you. I just wanted to address one of the points that Ms. Arnold stressed about, again, mobile services for our homeless constituents. In fact, in addition to what Ms. Edwards mentioned, we're actually using some of the ARPA funding to actually brand and deploy vans, new vans, that will enhance our ability to provide a whole litany of services out in the field to folks that are unsheltered. And we're actually looking at putting some professional health workers in those vans as well to administer, you know, street medicine, if you will, on site. So your point is very well taken, and I assure you, we are not just doing it now, but we expect to do more of it. you, we are not just doing it now, but we expect to do more of it. So, thank you for your comments.
Okay. Jeff, good morning.
Good morning. Likewise, I apologize that I didn't make it in here earlier. As you see me now like this, it seems to take a greater effort to get up and running. It's far easier to just watch you guys and oversight, but this was something that she brought to my attention last night at the DAC, Disability Advisory Council. And you know, as me, also as co-chair of the Point in Time Count, getting ready for that next January, we will say to you, there is a lot more of these problems that you really need to examine. I remember public authority more than a decade ago, before a number of you even were, should we say, Board of Supervisor people. So I echo many of the things that has been said. I, right now, reside over here in Pinew, and I will say to you, we probably have generally three deaths per month, because of the fact that any of you spoke to management, they would say that probably half of them should be in skilled centers and everything else. But nobody wants to go there, because once you're in, it's extremely hard to get out. So I will invite you to consider, what is public service? What is going on to make sure that people can live where they are living, and the services that are provided by the county Board of Supervisors? You are the one that's responsible for mental health. You are the one that, in a sense, tries to do some things through there. And I see my time is about up, so I will say, I hope that I make some impression on you guys by coming in and showing up and saying to you, these are important, and just like other things. And to Ann over here, I will invite to her, hopefully her staff knows what advisory committees are meeting and how long. This year, how many of them have met? And, you know, what is the attendance like for advisory committees that are here to tell you what in the world they're concerned about? And I leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Jeff, appreciate yours and Connie's comments, and it does, it is influential, so thank you.
And hopefully I can get another meeting again with you, and Fabio, and all members here in the future.
Hey, thank you.
And maybe we can be surveyed next time on this community survey, because nobody called in.
We'll follow up, we'll follow up with you, Connie.
All right.
Do we have a phone comment?
We do. We have one public caller. If you could transfer the caller. Hi, caller. Please start your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, good morning, Board of Supervisors. I just want to hear some loud voices.
I'm sorry, you can start again. I did disrupt your comments. My apologies.
No worries. Okay, good morning. I really appreciate the deep concern and care that was put into this conversation today, the discussion of preparing for economic downturn. It's definitely, I think, on the minds of a lot of county residents, including homeowners who pay lots in property taxes. I, however, am just, in the back of my mind, this whole discussion is the intent of the county to get a $925 million lease revenue bond for a new jail building that is not needed. And I, I am just so concerned about this. I think, you know, I don't know if the board realizes that this, in interest alone, this would be $50 million a year from the general fund, which, over 30 years or so, would make this project about $2 billion. And so I know that the board wants to make the most responsible decision. And I hear you that, you know, you're scared of federal receivership, and that you also care about the, you know, meeting the May's consent decree and providing better care for people inside. And I, I just want to remind the board that you have the power to, there's still not, alternatives have been explored. We all know we have a new, brand-new courthouse opening next year. Meanwhile, there are four very large courtrooms in the main jail that were never explored to be repurposed for an ADA and HIPAA compliant booking loop. And I realize that you all, I believe you all will be in closed session this afternoon, discussing the May's consent decree, and I just really, really hope that you all raise these important questions and insist, I mean, it would be faster and cheaper to repurpose the current building for the spatial issues that are needed to meet the May's consent decree. I also want to
Thank you, caller.
Okay, just to wrap up, you all received a letter on August 25 from the Prejudice Council, demanding, threatening legal action if you don't create a
Thank you.
... to transfer people with acute mental health outside of the jail.
Thank you, Liz.
So you're, one thing, you're already facing a threat of legal
Thank you. We have one more caller.
Supervisor Serna?
Wait till after the
Yeah.
Is it okay to transfer? Please transfer the caller.
Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Good morning, Board. My name is Mackenzie Wilson, bringing everyone from Sacramento. I'm calling to echo my colleague and many others in the room, and actually many community members that come to see you all often. The truth is, is that we are constantly living under austerity budget, and therefore never really given the access, the choice, and opportunity that we all deserve. I call because this budget is very important. Every budget is very important. And then when we talk about what my friend named a billion-dollar jail, we have to really take into account that, like, things like this are the reason that many of our community members live in crisis in the first place. And so for us, we wanted to ask for you all to, like, slow down always. But explore and fund a Plan B to the jail annex. We know that Sacramento County is not seriously considering utilizing the existing courtrooms inside of the jail, inside of the main jail, or more jail reduction population, or population reduction plans. We know that we could invest in community-based mental health care to provide legally mandated alternatives for incarcerated people with acute mental health. Right now, I mean, you have the county's mental health board recommendations to tell you how to meet the consent decree. And that includes investing and prioritizing building up the number of subacute care beds in Sacramento County. Instead of building a brand-new jail, we could prioritize funds to construct a treatment space for those individuals with behavioral health needs inside Sacramento jails and community members. You can just build a whole freestanding building that has nothing to do with that. We also really do want you to cancel an Norton Lewis Architecture Report. We know that they're the criteria architect. We didn't need that clarification last time we were there. We know that they're the criteria architect. We know that they've been making money off of this report, off of this building, that they wrote a report that they had to build. And we're still screaming that this is a conflict of interest, yet we keep, and we still continue to just give money to Norton Lewis to build the jail that, see, they said they, that we had to build. Do you get it? You see it, like, really see the conflict of interest?
Can you please wrap it up, Mackenzie?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Long story short, only a reinvestment in our care is the only way to, like, get us out of crisis. And we don't spend it that way. Look at the budget. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, y'all. My name is Nikki, and, you know, we call in often, and it's only once or twice a year that we call in specifically around this budget issue, but we know it's an issue that affects us all year long, right? The decisions that go into today's budget and, and the budget again, is, when it comes up, is, these are the programs that affect our lives. So if we're not having our, if we're not looking at a budget as a document that's going to get the needs of the people of Sacramento County met, then we're missing the point. And the point is that we have huge, huge gaps in social services. We have huge, huge gaps in mental health services. We have huge, huge gaps. I mean, as the caregivers have been so eloquently telling you, they need more. And I want to really just focus in on that for a second, thinking about the, the public benefit, the health and well-being that those workers bring to our community, and then thinking about your $45 million budget increase for the Sheriff's Department. I mean, I can't, you know, I can't understand a world where we can't pay these people who really provide such a caring and life-affirming benefit to the community. And of course, I'm talking about the care workers. Why we can't afford a living wage for them when we can afford these endless budget increases? This billion-dollar jail, you know, there's no, and as people eloquently said, much more than $1 billion. The commitment for this is, is wild, and we're, we're going to be unable to meet the commitments, to meet the needs of our community members. The gaps are too big right now, and we need to be focusing on that as crisis increase. We're, we're in a time where climate crisis is going to increase the need for public intervention, and we're going to need those dollars, not just in policing. We're going to have huge care gaps, and that is where we need to focus in with any kind of budget.
Okay, can you please wrap up your comments?
Yeah, care not caged, no new jail. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. Whoop, I think we somehow got disconnected, so I'm going to give him an opportunity and have my staff try to get him back. I'm not sure what happened.
Do we have any other callers?
We do not, so I'm going to close the queue at this time.
Yeah.
And then I'll have my staff try and contact this person back for that last number.
Okay.
Oops.
I'll start the timer for you, Flo.
Okay. Here we go. Hi, caller. Please start your comments. You have two minutes.
Board of Supervisors, I'm calling in to, once again, express deep concerns with the apparent misalignment of Sacramento County's budget priorities as exists within the current budget cycle. Given the immense crisis that we are facing, both in the area of housing affordability, our squating homeless population, with the lack of mental health care, and the significant understaffing of healthcare workers, and particularly in the area of mental health, I can't help but, I can't help but ask why this board insists on passing another status quo budget that prioritizes law enforcement and carceral funding over literally everything else. If law enfor, if enforcement and punishment inside of destitute jails actually solved anything, we'd be a utopian society by 30 years ago. But we continue to do the exact same thing over and over again. And we ignore all outside advice that comes in that would suggest otherwise, which is why the county is currently facing, like, an under federal consent decree and potentially facing a federal receivership, because it doesn't want to do anything different. It doesn't want to change, not its culture or the policies that, like, the underwriters. Sacramento County needs to explore and fund a Plan B for the jail annex, just like plaintiffs in the May's consent decree have orders you to, and judges have orders you to. Need to invest in community-based mental health care to provide legally mandated alternatives for incarcerated people with acute mental health needs, which is the majority of what the May's consent decree is calling for. But again, like, county staff insists on ignoring all of those directives, and this board shows an absolute dereliction of duty, like, an absence of leadership and fully directed behavior. They also need to implement all county mental health board recommendations, which have been out
Can you please wrap up your comments?
... November 22. Why the board, like, why this board continues to ignore community demands and insists on doubling the bounds
Okay, thank you for your comments.
... completely
Okay, that concludes your public comments.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. If there's no further public comment, I'd like to move approval of our final budget. I'm looking to council, can we, I think we had five or six actions that Amanda may have put up on the slide. Can we just take them all at once?
Yes.
Okay, so move approval of all the actions that Amanda Thomas provided us earlier.
With the addition of the
Of the $300,000 from the 1991 social services realignment.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve staff recommendation with the addition of the $300,000. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. And Amanda, I'll echo my, my thanks for you and all your hard work and the work of staff, and taking so much time to help, you know, brief us and explain, answer our, our very ignorant questions, certainly in my case, so I appreciate that. Okay, we'll move on to
County Executive?
Our county exec comments.
Thank you. I actually do have comments today. First, I want to thank Supervisor Serna and Desmond for the meeting yesterday about Families First. I think that it's absolutely critical that children being removed from their home be placed with family members whenever possible, and so I think this is a good use of resources to do that. I also want to, again, thank Ms. Thomas and her team. I mean, they literally do a superb job, and it's, it's worth saying again. And then finally, I want to thank all of you. You know, you have been incredibly easy to work with, and you're reasonable and professional all the time, and I just, myself and my team appreciate all five of you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ann. Any comments from my colleagues? Supervisor Serna?
Yes, thank you. So I wanted to bring up an item that hopefully resonates with our Department of Transportation. I don't know if Ron is listening in or anyone from DOT, but I have confidence that it will be conveyed to the appropriate DOT personnel. And this is with regards to what we're seeing on Freedom Park Drive. And this is a, this is a street that is used to access not only the north entrance to McLallan Business Park, but also the California Aerospace Museum is right on the frontage. What is going on lately is an increase in unlawful parking, unlawful parking of vehicles that unfortunately some have decided to set up camps around, RVs that are dilapidated, not registered. And unfortunately, we had a pretty sizable fire recently in one of these encampments. This is an area that is, lies between districts, so District, District Four, Supervisor Frost, District, the one that she represents to the north, and of course, District One, which includes McLallan Park. So I would like to, again, stress the need for urgent attention. What has been suggested by many is to replace no parking signs with no stopping signs, which I understand will actually give our Sheriff's Department more ability, more authority to, it's not just cite, but have towed, when necessary, some of these derelict vehicles. Obviously, it's become a clear public safety issue when we have fires of this magnitude, as you can see from the, the overhead. So, and I also want to acknowledge the fact that we are in receipt of an email from Tom Jones, who is the director over at the Aerospace Museum, pleading with us to do something, because it is adversely affecting the patronage of the, of the museum from a public safety standpoint. So this is what I believe of utmost import that deserves attention now. So I'm hopeful that, Ms. Edwards, you can help get this addressed in a timely fashion.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Frost?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank Supervisor Serna for bringing this up, and also wanted to mention that there was some conversation from economic development and some possible other funding sources that could help. I guess, some and some possible other funding sources that could help, I guess, some great ideas around repurposing those parking spaces with bike lanes, and maybe some kind of planner boxes that would not enable someone to park there, and, and just to reiterate that everything Supervisor Serna said, I feel the same way, I'm hoping we can do what the community wants, which is to just eliminate the parking spaces, and, and that would give CHP the ability to, in a no-stopping zone, the ability to tow those vehicles, rather than go through a process.
We will look at all options, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, I don't see any more colleagues in the queue, so we will adjourn the public session, I believe we're going into, we have a closed session, but we will not have to reconvene in public session, okay, so our, our public meeting is adjourned.
Get her a week pad.